Ladies and gentlemen, how you doing? We're gonna go ahead and start our council meeting. We're gonna ask Minister Rosalind Chipman from St. John to come to the mic and give us your prayer. And we'll ask you to remain standing for Ms. Patricia Lane to give us our Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon. May we albatross. Father God, right now we come repenting everything that we've done that was not according to your word. Hallowed be thy name, oh God. God, I pray for the council members right now so they can make decisions, the right decision. It deliberates on each item. God, may your word stand right now in the name of Jesus, God. God, as they go forward, Lord, just give them the wisdom and guidance for every decision. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do you all face the flags? Repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ms. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir.
Mayor McLendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter, Jr., thank you. Counselor Bruce.
Here.
Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Kroom.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Wheeles.
Here.
We have 10 out of 10, present. That's a quorum. We had no bid openings. Were there any corrections to the minutes?
Make motion to approve or submit it. Second.
All in favor, aye. Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We had no O business. So, Ms. Mohammed, will you do me the honor of this R1?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that R1 be read by title only.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. City Attorney?
R1 is a resolution authorizing the city of West Memphis to enter into a consent administrative order with the Arkansas Department of Energy and Environment Division of Environmental Quality, DEQ.
All right. Having that here, can I get a motion to second to approve?
So, ladies.
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No.
All right. Bob, are you there? Or you're not?
He gone.
Oh. Can you just give, for transparency for the public, can you just give just a quick synopsis of what we doing?
Yes, so, the purpose of this resolution is to allow the mayor to sign an amended consent order with the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. The reason we needed amended consent order is ADQ conducted a records review in advance of an EPA audit and discovered that there were unauthorized discharges that were not covered under the original consent order. So, in order for the city of West Memphis and West Memphis Utilities not to be liable for any of those additional, or those unauthorized discharges until we complete construction on the wastewater plant, we need to amend the consent order.
All right. Thank you. That's just an explanation of why we doing this. I just wanted, once again, in my efforts to be more transparent to the community, understand what we are doing. There was no other question, so, Ms. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Counselor Bruce?
Yes.
Counselor Kat?
Yes.
Counselor Kroom?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeles?
Yes.
10 out of 10.
It passes. Would you give that resolution the number?
That will be Resolution 2673.
267?
Oh, I'm sorry. Out of practice, sorry. 2300.
2300. All right, it passes. Mr. Atkins, you be safe. All right.
Thank you very much, City Council.
All right. We're gonna move down to permission request. Permission for the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement, an MOA, between the city of Memphis, Tennessee, the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, the city of Milton, Tennessee, the town of Collierville, Tennessee, the city of Bartley, Tennessee, and the town of Arlington, Tennessee for the Mid-South Rapid retrofit project addressing barriers to residential energy efficiency in the greater Memphis. Just gonna ask Director Bowman, just give a quick synopsis, once again, for the public to know.
Good afternoon. The Rapid retrofit program is basically a weatherization program that's being extended to all the municipalities that are surrounding the greater Memphis area. It's being led by Shelby County's Office of Sustainability. And the reason we were invited to participate and come to the table is because we affect the attainment of the air quality requirements for the city of Memphis and that area. And as many of you know, statistically, we are lumped in with the Memphis MSA anyway. So, all of these participating jurisdictions are a part of the MSA. We are relatively close and we share a lot of the transportation area with Memphis and Shelby County. So, we have an opportunity, we have an opportunity to go after funding that will support the entire area where we could do a retrofit program to weatherize homes, to make them more energy efficient, to reduce the carbon footprint of those households, as well as save money for those individual households. And some of the retrofits will include, and may include, windows, insulation, floor insulation, air sealing, and those sort of things. So, this is a great opportunity for West Memphis and hopefully we'll get this funding at some level to be able to help out the citizens of West Memphis.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. You don't want to have any questions or questions about this? We talked about it a little pre-council. I just wanted, for the sake of transparency for the public, would be able to hear what it was about and asking the question. So, I'm gonna ask, this time not hearing any questions, you call the roll on that?
Mayor, if I may, make a motion to approve as read, subject to a couple of changes City Attorney needs to make.
Can I get a second on?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Opposed? All right, we're just gonna read, subject to the City Council, yeah, his corrections before. All right. All right, we're talking about?
Yes, sir. Counselor Bruce?
Yes.
Counselor Kat?
Yes.
Counselor Kroom?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeles?
Yes.
10 out of 10.
We got 10 out of 10 on that, so, it is approved. We're gonna go down to the committee reports. We're gonna start with police.
Yes, for police, Matt, last Monday, the department gave us an update on some equipment issues that they'll be looking to purchase. It totals around $234,000, $235,000. They're looking at, you know, through their budget now to come up with those funds. If not, we'll be asking Ms. Perry if we can look at the capital outlay account, see how close we are. 10 of the radios have out, being tested now. They're in patrol cars, officers are using them. Should be finished by August 1st with the testing, determine what type of program adjustments need to be made. That'll be turned over to the supplier. Should have all the radios in the officers' hands by August 1st. The 911 system should be in total conversion and operational by maybe 11-1 at the end of the year at worst. And those were the three main points that we discussed at the meeting.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Coach, your men?
Yes, sir.
All right. Public Works?
Yeah.
Did we, Public Works? Oh.
Go ahead.
I've got it.
All right.
Public Works Committee met 6/4/2024. We approved reports, fleet report. Front-end loaders, four operational, none down. Rear-end loaders, two operational, zero down. One-armed bandits, three, none down. Grapple trucks, four optional, none down. Public, and before I go any further, let me, let me take care of this. We need another grapple truck. And we need another rear loader that we can find, you know, lease them out and save the money. But they say that's all they like, having the Public Works up to, really, they all said it would be a great tiny thing to have it in that good a shape. So, we had Public Works Director report, recycle total was 9,800 pounds, tires, 580 pounds, garbage, trash dumped, 1,727 tons. Carts, one purchased, carts, three stolen, replaced with police report. And that's the end of my report. It was very small, but a lot of good things going on.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna move to utility.
Okay. At the last meeting, it was announced that safety director job would be posted at the utilities. So, we also discussed customers will be charged for water meters, whether they use water or not, per policy. Another issue, customer information systems. Utilities will be coming up with a new system. You'll be able to pay and do customer service problems. If you have customer service problem, you'll be able to do that online. You will probably be able to pay bills at Big Star, Walgreens, and/or Walmart. They also discussed a customer wreck at the drive-through window. The individual, while sitting in there waiting to pass, waiting to pay his bill, I guess, hit his gas and basically ran over the, while sitting at the window, he hit his car when it came out of park. But he was hurt pretty bad and he ended up passing. Also, there will be a scholarship fund, interest fund, which is where the interest comes out of interest fund, where money will come from. The steering committee will be, will write up the policy. The steering committee will consist of Tori, Mr. Holmes, myself, and the general manager. And basically, what they will do is provide scholarships for students here in West Memphis that are going to school, not just academic, but skills schools as well. There'll be $50,000 a year that they would, that they would take out. And there'll be different components in it, community service, grades, and needs. The motion was moved for this and it passed. And the city will be hiring students to paint fire hydrants this summer as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Bruce, I may not have understood you correctly and expound on it, please. You said even if the customers are not using water, they will still be charged for a water meter?
Yes, this is based on, I guess these are some, some of the large companies.
Oh, okay.
Not citizens, but companies that, like during irrigation time, when they're, they're not using, but they'll still be charged for that equipment.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bruce?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody, any resident that has a water meter for irrigation of their yard is now being charged a meter fee, which they hadn't been in the past. It's like 19 bucks.
Well, let me, let me add this. I did talk with Bob about that. And what Bob is doing is following the ordinance.
That's right.
And the City Council felt that that's something they wanted to change or address. Then, that you all, but right now, he's following what the ordinance says to do.
Yes, sir. I spoke to Bob and he did.
Mayor, I'm still on here.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so, the, the reason for the, so, when a, when a resident, a utility customer has a water meter, so, the AMI meters are significantly more expensive and the utility is required to maintain, purchase, maintain, and provide service. So, where it's an issue is on the irrigation meter. So, customers have separate, separate meters for irrigation. And the benefit for that is, is when they have an irrigation system and they have, and it's metered separately, they do not have to pay the sewer charge on irrigation. So, that is how, that is the benefit for them, having a separate meter on irrigation. But even when they don't have any usage, the ordinance is very clear that there is a water meter charge. And so, we are just enforcing the city ordinance at this point. That's the only change that we've been, that we've undertaken.
Bob, did we ever explore any idea of why we haven't been charging that fee?
I've asked that question multiple times and it's not in any regulation with the utility. The utility commission does not approve that, as far as I can tell. I can, but my position was that we need to follow the ordinance. That was, that's, that's the law of the city and we're gonna follow that.
Agreed.
I need to have something approved. So, when it comes to the scholarship fund, we're opening up a different, a separate bank account for that. So, in order for me to do that, I need it reflected in the minutes that I'm able to open up a bank account for the West Memphis Utilities Scholarship Fund and that me, Tori Perry, Charlie Suter, and Tracy Kat are the authorized signatures on that account. So, I just need that in the minutes and approved by you all for us to open that account.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, aye. Were there any discussions to that?
As far as the scholarship fund, I know this may not be right on what you're talking about, but where would that money, those, that money come from?
You go?
Yeah, so, we have, the utility has restricted and unrestricted CDs. And so, as it sits at the bank, it encourages interest. And so, what we're doing is we're utilizing that interest income and just moving it from interest income to the scholarship fund. So, it's not anything that the citizens are directly paying for, it's just something that's just generating at the bank.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I approve greatly.
Were there any other questions?
Mayor, can I, can I make a comment? It may go back to Public Works. All right, it may go, I know it's Ms. Patricia, our city clerk. But during the Public Works meeting, there was a concern about businesses being run out of their homes, especially lawn care and tree trimming. And we don't know if they have a, we don't, I mean, we don't know, as council people, if those people have a privileged license to do business out of their homes. The second thing is, is we're noticing, at least we have been noticing, that they bring stuff home from their job and they put it on the curb and the city picks it up. And they only, they don't get charged for any kind of commercial, they just get charged for their routine residential pickup. So, I just threw it out there for a concern.
Would you have any addresses?
Yes.
Could you get those?
I'll give to, I'll give to Ms. Patricia.
Thank you.
So, last time we had a house that was, was people's rights on the DRC, it came out. And that's the last one that was approved by the City Council, for them to operate out of a house. So, I think that stopped it at that time.
Okay.
Well, they're going on now, there's at least two and more than three.
Well, let me do this real quick. We got a motion to second to approve, Ms. Perry's. Motion. All in favor, aye. Opposed? Then you go get the, the bank account with the City Treasurer, with Counselor Kat on there.
Ms. Patricia, keep putting the minutes that it's gonna be a fidelity bank. I forgot to say that. Get that.
All right. Were there any other committees or any other reports that need to have been came up today? Okay, I'm gonna move down to announcements. I'm trying to be very quick.
Can I say this?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I hope we're not getting involved with this lawn care service where I have somebody come over to my house and mow my yard and we're gonna have to charge them, they have to pay a privileged license and do that? Or just?
So, if you're a business owner, or next door neighbor's son, you know, it would be a little bit different. If you operate inside the city of West Memphis, you're supposed to pay a first class, you're supposed to have insurance. And you have to, be as long.
But do you realize there's probably over 200 or 300 people doing this?
Mr. Patricia will send the money out of town.
You're selling it. How many, how many people are gonna go after?
She sure will.
I just wanna address the fact that together, okay, the Planning and Development Code Enforcement Department and the Clerk's office have been working cohesively together to identify anybody that is out on the streets cutting a property without a privileged license. When they identify him, they bring, they escort him into the office and they are required to have a privileged license, a bond, a surety bond made payable to the city in case there's any damages. And we make sure they're licensed. So, if you see somebody, you have a name on a truck, just call the Clerk's office and we will work with Mr. Bowman's office and get it corrected as best we can.
All right, thank you. Let me go down to announcements. First off, I want to address, I know in our call to action tour, we had some constituents, innocent council members, legal officials, and one issue was brought up about code enforcement officers. And I'm listening to everything that people are asking. So, I did sound a requisition today with Director Bowman's office, if we can ready to hire a part-time inspector to try, to try to address things like code infractions and different things like that. But they're only gonna work, it's part-time, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, 'cause Saturday is when a lot of people are doing the work and the legal action. So, it's also gonna free up the vehicle as well, because definitely we don't want someone just riding with someone else. We definitely want everyone to be working. So, it's gonna be a part-time to make sure we can address some of them issues that Councilman Holt brought up during the meeting. So, definitely, we will get that taken care of and we're just looking for a qualified person possibly can work on that. Also, at that meeting, I wanna, once again, I wanna encourage everyone in the city to start coming out to the meetings and listening to what's going on, because I hate when it comes time for anything, you didn't know, we ain't, we ain't being transparent. It's really that, it may be because you don't like what's going on, or you haven't had the opportunity to do the research like we all do. But please come out to the meetings to make sure you hear what's going on, because everything, we're not gonna always agree, but thank God that we're in a democratic system where when it comes down to election, you vote for what you want or you vote against what you want. So, please come out and truly be informed. Next week at Richland Elementary at 6:00, I'll be back there again at 6:00 PM. And I'm gonna have the whole team there, once again, we're gonna do some things just a little bit different. It's gonna be video and everything there, so people can understand what we doing. And it may be some people that still is not gonna agree with everything, but some people that may agree with it. And not only just agreeing or disagreeing, we really wanna hear from you. See, when you have an opportunity to speak and say what you concerned about, but you never come up with that, but then when something is brought forward, you wanna be the first one to be against it, that's the issue. So, I'm looking for more solutions and being a part of the solution and not being a part of the problem, not using this as a political stance. And I'm speaking out to the Wees group. They need to start to bring their ideas of how we can work together, to try to work through some of this and come up with some ideas, because believe it or not, they are our constituents too. So, I listen to everyone, whether I agree with you or don't, they sit out constituents. So, we wanna work with everyone and, you know, to make these things happen and not just be effective, you just going against it because it's the mayor. Because actually, it gonna be the city and the citizens that's gonna be the ones that make this decision. It's best to be a part of it than to be left on the outside and other things that's going on. So, I'm advising everyone to come out next Tuesday at Richland Elementary, Richland Elementary, from 6 to 8. And the first hour, it may be us, you know, just talking about what we doing, our plans and different things like that. And then we lay, leave the other hour open for questions and concerns, like we did at fault this past Tuesday. Matter of fact, I don't think we was up speaking to them one about 30, 40 minutes. I think the other hour and 20 minutes, people asking, and I have no problem with people asking questions, 'cause they need to know what's going on, it's their tax dollars, you know. And everyone is not gonna agree with me, but I do want them to hear what I'm saying. It's what I wanna hear what they're saying, because we may be able to make some things work well. We can do some things different. So, I'm asking everyone that's in the Weaver area, not, I'm sorry, not the Weaver, the Richland area, to come out and be a part, where they can hear what's going on and we can move forward like that. And they will, we'll be truly informed. Also, during the time, we did start our West Memphis United campaign. And you'll see this week, another press conference from the pastors and the Parks Department, because it's very important of the responsibility that I feel that they have, our police department have taken the stand. And if you look at some of the numbers that they gave, Chief, do you have them numbers?
No.
Well, Chief, you just come to the mic, just get some of the numbers, which is Operation Purge, and you are here exactly what they have been doing, so they can stop saying, "Well, don't hit them for the police department."
Since, since we first started the, the operation, just on firearms alone, we've confiscated, let's see, two 380 caliber handguns, 25 9-millimeter handguns, 645 caliber handguns, four 40 caliber handguns, two 22 caliber handguns, two 25 automatic handguns, four 10-millimeter handguns, five 7.62 rifles, and two 223 carbine pistols. Also, during that, we confiscated a couple of firearms that had Glock switches on them. I brought that up at the Police Commission meeting the other day, that's what we're up against. And if you don't know what that is, it takes my gun, makes it fully automatic. So, when I pull the trigger, it empties whatever's in my gun. It empties it out. Let's see, we got, we also came up with a shining star for the week. So, if we arrest you and you one of the high-profile criminals on our streets, we're gonna post you on Facebook, gonna tell everybody about you. So, it doesn't only show your bosses and everybody else who you really are, but shows the citizens who you are and who to be out, to watch out for. Statistics, let's see if I've got that. During, during this Operation Purge, we made 100 misdemeanor arrests, which is nonviolent felonies and, and non-felonies. We made 27 narcotic seizures. We've made 125 citations, which citation is arrest, but we release you on citation, like traffic stops. 45 felony arrests and, like I say, 45 gun seizures. So, we're out here, they know we're there, and even on Facebook, if you look at that, a lot of the citizens in here and in Memphis are, are talking. They know we're coming and we're not gonna stop.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A few of them, yes.
So, that's why it's so important that we want the citizens to come out, 'cause we may hear about it, and we just definitely want the citizens to come out and get this information. And I do apologize for my chief, but he did say this, you know, he is, he is not a politician, he is a, a police officer. So, I guess sometime when he talk, he can't get elaborate, like us up here can say the right things and I don't want anything that he said that, that can sway the wrong way. But these guys are here to fight and protect us. So, we just want to make sure that everyone know that. So, our police department is very active. I see the major back there as well, they, they are very active in fighting crime. We just wanna make sure that the people know. And, you know, I understand there may be some criticism, 'cause there's always room for improvement, but it's best to be supporting them and making sure that they do everything they need to do, then always complaining and complaining and complaining without any solution. So, that meeting was very good, it was very informative to the people, left, right, they said they were very informed and sometime- They said they were very informed and sometimes it may be the same people, but we ask for more people can come out and get that information so that they can be, Ms. Patricia was there as well. I want, I, I want them to, to start being evangelists for us to say what we doing and what we can do to be, be better. So I thank you for your presence there and any other person outside of the council members and elected officials, police far, who was there, thank you all for coming out, Director Rose as well. So we just want to make sure, make sure everyone informed and know what we doing and, and we want to work on being better, because we want to be better for the city that we all love. Also, Tuesday started a great day for me once again, our summer jobs program with our young people. They started, we interviewed some great, intelligent young men and women all over the city. We're looking for, they, they are working currently, I have a city utility department there, and I seen probably six of them, I think partnered with the fire department, they getting ready to do some, some repainting on the, on the fire hydrants and different things like that. We got some that's walking through our offices right now, they are very intelligent, doing some great things, and they're just good airport, they, they all over the city, you know, A and P. So it's just so good to see them out and being involved and being active and, and learning so much stuff and seeing what we have as a city to offer, because, you know, I asked them one question that they mean, how many of your kids that are not here that's coming back? And, you know, some of them said, well, they're not coming back. Why not? Because of the lack of what they learned or, or it's nothing to do here in the city. And I want them to start to be active and, and I love what I say, because we can't bring back our homegrown stock people, that's a problem. So lastly, we asking them to come up with their ideas, because we are looking at things to present and we still looking, but I just want to hear from the people as well, so we can try to make some things better. All right, that's the summer jobs program. Also, Saturday, June fifteenth would be the celebration of the Juneteenth Festival here at the city of West Memphis, and it will be held at the High Tower Park. So I talked with the directors, the director Jones, he says you're going to be at the High Tower Park. So we asking anyone to come out to enjoy themselves and celebrate in their holiday on festivals in June fifteenth for the Juneteenth Festival. Anyone else have any announcement to make? Also, the municipal league is the thirteenth through the fourteenth of next week. So thirteen, fourteen, fifteen? Thirteen, fourteenth, and fifteenth of next week, that's Wednesday through seven, Wednesday through Friday. So that is the municipal league, thirteen, twelve, okay, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, that Wednesday through Friday, the municipal league. So everyone that is planning on going, I'm sure you probably have got with Kenneth and he have already got that information to you. And if you're not going, Ms. Patricia is informing, please let us know as soon as possible about the municipal league. Were there other, any other information or concerns or announcement that anyone want to bring forward?
Remembrance of D-Day is today, June the sixth.
Yes, that's right, I seen President Biden over this morning. So yeah, today is D-Day. You want to kind of expand on that, Councilman McCone, D-Day?
D-Day?
Yeah.
Well, D-Day was the beginning of the end of the, the Nazi Party and, and the dictator, Adolf Hitler, and it ended the war not much longer after that, but there were a lot of young men that stormed the beaches over there that were sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old. And they had something like six thousand casualties storming the beaches. So we lost a lot of young men that day and there's a lot of people that are still alive today that actually, that actually was on the beach. I had a, a cousin that I posted on Facebook, he was with the Army and he was nineteen or eighteen years old when he stormed those beaches. And he just passed away last week, but to hear him talk about it was just chilling. So just remember, that's the greatest generation and they should be, still be remembered and honored.
Man, we definitely, we thank all of them who made that ultimate sacrifice and thank, thank your cousin and well the many other for their service to our country. My last thing I'm saying is, I think this, I want to thank every member of this city council, even though we may not always agree, but I want to thank you for your input, because I believe that you have passion and you have love for the city. And I think right now we're in the opportunity to do some amazing things for the city of West Memphis. Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something for you?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Herr.
Okay, going back to Public Works, we having a bad problem with the people's putting the trash out on empty lots over there on Polk Street, but I had asked a lady to take a picture of the one doing it and the address and send it to us and we will do something, we will send code enforcement out there. We just can't send them out there to anyone's house, because we don't know who's doing it.
Well, you're exactly right. I just really wish the people, some people in West Memphis would take more pride in their community. I know I was coming from Park Plaza, the Riverside, and they put the garbage cans on, not the garbage can, their trash bag on the top of their car. They pass right by the garbage can and go onto the service row and drops it all on the service row. It just think about pride in your community, you know? I just wishing that more people would just do that, so.
And we could take pictures of those people that's doing that and like put them on Facebook with their car when they doing it.
I didn't have anything, yeah. City Attorney?
Second, second. Did you call for a adjournment?
No, yeah, someone, can I get a motion?
Second.
Councilman Monday, did you have something?
Yes, Councilman Murray and Jim Jackson, I'd like to speak with y'all after, after the meeting, please.
Have we got a motion by Councilman Crum? Like a second? Now, this is adjourned. Dr. Bruce? On the paper, aye? Oppose? Let's get out of here. Thanks.